Please rise for the implication. Governor, Reverend, who you are, retired, denied your amendment.
Let us pray. Oh God, Creator of all people, we acknowledge your abiding love for all creation and for those whom you have created in your image. We humbly ask for your help to live together in communities of support and respect and harmony. Thank you for giving us ways to resolve conflicts and solve problems through institutions such as this body assembled here this evening. As we remember President Lincoln's profound and inspiring words delivered 150 years ago today at the Battle of Gettysburg, we ask you to help us here honor those who have given to us this representative Democratic City Government in Hickory. By making all actions taken here tonight, be of the people, by the people, and for the people, so that our city might move forward with inclusion and justice for all. In prayer in this holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with a presentation about the Business Well-Crafted Award by Dave Gessli of the Business Development Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Baron, Mr. Crum. My privilege to be back here again this evening to make another presentation for the Business Well-Crafted Award. You'll indulge me, you've heard this now for every month this year, and many of the attendees here are the same people and have heard, but for the benefit of those people that are new this evening, a little bit of history of who the Business Development Committee is and what this award is about. A few years ago, City Council established the Business Development Committee. Our purpose is to support the growth and the continuation of existing as well as new business ventures here in the Hickory community. One of the projects we did was the branding, which is Life Well-Crafted, and as an extension of that, to show our appreciation and gratitude for the contribution that businesses have made who have been in our community for 75 years or more, we established what is known now as the Business Well-Crafted Award. We have made one presentation each month so far this year, so this evening it is our privilege to make the 11th presentation. Some information from the Small Business Administration shows that out of new business startups, 50% are still in business after five years. Only 33%, roughly a third, after 10, gets down to 25% at 15. I can find no data on 25, 50, or 75, but it becomes very obvious that this is an extremely elite group when you get to the 75-year benchmark. Tonight's recipient is fast approaching 100 years, so they are in an extremely elite group throughout the entire country, and it truly is a privilege, I think, for us to be able to make this contribution. At this time, I would like to call up some people from the company we will be making the presentation to, and we'll turn our back on mute and speak to the crowd to make the presentation. The recipient tonight is Keever Key and Repair Service. We are privileged tonight to have with us Doyle Keever and his wife Diane, Mr. Cozy, who is the president, am I correct? We have Jennifer Richards and her brother Jonathan Cozy here with us tonight, so if you all will be kind enough to come up and join me. To tell you a little bit about Keever, they began in 1918, and correct me if I'm wrong on anything here, but it started as Hickory Nut Shop down on Union Square. In 1920, Keever actually began where they began to make keys out of the back room and established the business. If you know a little bit of history, they were just getting their feet on the ground when the Depression would have hit by 1929 or '30. They have survived the Depression, the war, they survived the '60s, but I don't think anybody locked anything up, so it didn't easy then. All the innovation that has taken place with technology, our economic downturn, and they are still thriving and going strong. The reason that they have succeeded is what we believe in here with our branding of Life Well-Crafted and Business Well-Crafted. They perform what they do with a high degree of excellence and integrity. There is no way that you can be in business that long just selling a product and mistreating the people that you serve. What has kept them thriving is that. Small Business Association also talked about, one of the reasons for our lot of failures is you do not have a qualified successor. They are now into the fourth generation of Keever people in this business. If you're able to go two generations, it's a success story. When you get to that, again, it's another thing that's absolutely phenomenal. So it is our privilege to present to you this evening this award. Let me read what it says, if I can. Business Well-Crafted Award, Keever's Key and Repair Service, presented by the Business Development Committee, thanking companies for more than 75 years of doing business in the community. Thank you very much.
On behalf of Keever's Key and Repair Service, I would like to thank the committee for awarding this award to us. As he said and he mentioned, we have been around a long time, we have done what we think is the best types of business that you can do, and have to be honest and upright with the people and give them a good job for the money we charge. I want to thank this committee again for this award, and I want to thank the committee for doing something that makes this award special, that they do recognize businesses that have been in business for more than 75 years, and I think that's great. Would you like to say something again?
Well, I think, like most everyone here, I've had occasions with the business experience behind the doors, and they are truly service-oriented and wonderful people to do business with. And I had the pleasure, you know, I think I'm on record as talking about how much I love this job most of the time. But one of the great pleasures I've had was presenting a key to the city to Mr. Keever on the occasion of 100th birthday. Gosh, she didn't look a day over 75. She might not have looked a day over 65, I think she looked younger than I did. And what a wonderful cheerful lady, I mean, she's one of these people, she lights up at them, and the comment I made at that time was, it's ironic that I'm giving a key to the city to somebody who's handled every key in this city. It's wonderful guys, and I hope that you have another 75, 80, 90 years. Thank you. I'm going to interview special guests, and they're all a lot more special, we appreciate you being here, I'm going to leave out a special guest here, but, or two accidentally, we have scouts here working on their citizenship badge. They're from tree 250 out of St. Luke's Methodist Church, and I'm just going to ask them to stand up and give their names, please.
I'm Battle Nichols.
And I'm Star Scout.
I'm Reeve Sonnycut, and I'm a first-class scout.
Good, good to have you guys. And, you know, not long ago, we had an honor group from St. Stevens High School civics class who were with us, and they're working on an extensive project for, was it a class or? Mr. Crum, I think you, would you be exposed to them, or?
No, they're still there, Senator. If I just spoke to them, they probably wouldn't have come. Hank, yes, and I will be there Thursday morning and afternoon for two classes, so be easy on us, okay?
And I think I've been asked to go back, I'm not certain, I'm not positive of that, but I think I've been asked to come back, and I don't know what my role is, but I will tell you this, I know these young people, and I'll tell each successful group their code. This is a lot better looking group than the previous. Go back and tell them I said that. But we are delighted to have our, and I'm going to ask them to stand and introduce themselves, these are the best students at St. Stevens in the civics classes. So I don't know who's going to start.
I thought I'd start.
All right.
Since I'm the crazy teacher, it may be the same. So I'm Ms. Davis, and our group, actually, I'm the head softball coach at St. Stevens. So it kind of started because we wanted likes for our field, and so when we went to our county commissioners, I had a lot of parents asking me questions, and I thought, well, parents don't know, and maybe the kids don't know. So once I had an opportunity to teach the Orange Civics Class, then I had an opportunity to say, okay, let's go to a county commissioner meeting, let's go to a city council meeting, let's find out what they do. So that's how the project got started, and I can say we are getting likes this year from 13. And so we have several students here tonight, so I'm going to let them introduce themselves. So I'll start with these three, I've left.
I'm Bailey Oder.
I'm Courtney Miller.
I'm Katie Herro.
Yeah.
I'm Justin Corney.
I'm Ryan Mostlock.
That is Bois.
Chris Rice.
Jessica Fleming.
Kristen Burrows.
Karen Ball.
Maria Pecanera.
Eva Farrier.
Aspen Thomas.
Okay, does anybody not stand up yet? Well, we are delighted to have you, and I hope you learn something from this experience, and I hope that you, that you think about the benefits of community service, whether it's political or otherwise, that's good back to the community, and help somebody the same way that many of us feel like we're trying to. But I was very impressed with that class, nobody, there was no dozing, I'm going to check and see Hank if anybody dozed in one ear up there. There was no dozing, and it's right after lunch, so I was very pleased, and they really are smart. I never get that one down, I'm up there talking about all this wonderful stuff we want to do, and she said, how are you going to pay for that? I never get that question before. Okay. Ms. Kamiski, Neighborhood College.
Mr. Mayor, some of the council members, and various officials, thank you kindly. I'm going to introduce another class, not that class, Reverend, but I'm here to talk about our neighborhood college class. They are graduates tonight, and I'm very honored to be here to talk on their behalf. And actually, I have a lot to say, I'm going to talk on behalf of the program, but first I'd like to say thank you to you for letting us do this program, also to all of the staff who participated, they did such a fine job, they went out of their way to wonderful tours and departments, just in a 11-week course, and they got to experience all the departments, a little bit of what everybody does, the tours, the water plants, as well as some of the other places that we have, wonderful places in the city. The library was last night, so everybody did a great job of putting it all together, and I appreciate the students and participants that went through it, because they gave a whole lot of weeks of their time on Monday nights for two hours every night to do this, so I think they deserve this honor, and I still would such a wonderful moment for this. But instead of me talking tonight about this program, I've asked three different people to talk about this program from their perspective, because we have a range of people that went through this class this year, and before they graduate, I'm going to have them share with you a little bit about their experiences. Our first one, not that both are coming up, or just one of them, but we have Erin Jones and Shahabert, they're actually city employees, and I was honored to have some city employees go through this this year with me, and they're an author here, and he's going to talk on behalf of the employee perspective. And then I'm going to have Vanita Hawkins, and I want her to share her story, because she's a new resident as well as her sister. And Peggy Fullwood and her husband, John Robson, Peggy's going to speak, she's a longtime resident here in Hickory, so I'm going to introduce Erin, Erin Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members, Mr. Baron, Mr. Crum. I'm Erin Jones, I have been employed with the city for eight years. This is my coworker, Alicia, she's been here a year and a half in collections. I actually began my career in collections as well, moved to accounting, doing accounts payable, now for five and a half years. I joined the communications team about two years ago, and learned about Neighborhood College, was interested in it, it didn't work out, so when Alicia joined the communications team last year, she was interested as well, so we both decided to just go for it, and of course, so glad that we did. We both learned so much from this. I was interested in doing this mainly to learn more about what the other departments do. I sit and I look at invoices all day, and I was just simply interested in what the other departments were doing. Alicia being in the customer service position with the public, was just interested in gaining knowledge about the city services offered. It was truly refreshing, in our perspective, to see how passionate and dedicated the other coworkers were about their positions and what they do for the citizens, and the dedication that we provide to the citizens is truly impeccable, and I think that's really what we got the most out of, was just how passionate and knowledgeable, we have a very knowledgeable staff. So that's it, we're very grateful to work with the city and to have a great place to live. Thank you.
Hi, ladies, Vanita Hawkins, Mayor, Wright, Conson, Berry, Tom.
I'm that new student, that new resident from Los Angeles, California, and everybody asked me, what the heck is this going to be for? But I'm going to go into school in Bloom, so next year, so I was like, how do I find a place to stay? I was like, where am I on a stage where it's close to Charlotte and close to Bloom? And I'm like, I went to look up this website, Hickory website, which by the way is an amazing website, you guys really showed me what I wanted to see about the city, which was the nature part of the city. Coming from Los Angeles, this, you know, very crowded, too many people, but when I saw the website and saw the beautiful nature, I was like, okay, here for me to do. And then as I'm looking and going through, and I see, they do a college, I was like, what's that? Never heard of it. Didn't think a city would have something like this, but, you know, signed up for it, my sister and I signed up for it, and the class is amazing, it really showed me a lot about the city. I'm impressed, really, to be honest with you, I'm impressed how you guys are really up to date on everything. And I know you guys work really hard, and media and live and workers in the city really gave me an opportunity to really hear and see the work that they're doing, and I'm amazed, and you guys keep up the great work. I was supposed to be moving to Bloom, but I think I would have stayed here. So I just want to say thank you for having this class, and thank you Dana, and, oh man, so, but it's a wonderful class, was able to see and learn a lot about the city, so thank you guys, and I'm honored.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council members, Mr. Crum. I come here to speak as a law desert, so I can hit the, like, 2:44, long time ago. My father was a lawyer from Alamo, from Alamo, in Alamo, and we settled in Kenworth there in a restaurant in town called New Market Cafe, which he later changed to Baby's Restaurant. The next door to that was the old Fresh Air Bar downtown, and down the street was a nice little new pharmacy, which was Bill McDonald's Pharmacy, his father's pharmacy. So that's been a long time ago. Living in Kenworth, I lived, used to walk downtown, across the railroad track in which waited for the trains to get through, switching their engines and stop, looked over at the depot, which was really a train depot at that time, and then on the TV show on Saturday mornings. So as a child, I went to the city school system, went on to go around college, which now is a university, even went to CDC, which at that time was one building, went on to high school for a few years, and then finished that, embraced my family, and went on back to work again in the real estate industry. Well, in the real estate industry, you've got to know, you know, a little bit about your city, and you can, this building here is built, and the Juncle Building, but we'd come here, you know, to get the zoning laws, and the rules, the regulations, the housing, the building, and that sort of thing. So time went by, and I didn't pay that much attention, so I quit working, and I did other things, and I realized, gosh, I kind of lost my connection to Hickory. I played tennis, and the tennis courts, and I liked recreation, and I found out about, excuse me, I have a coat, I found out about the Highland Recreation Center, the Indian Tennis Sports Area, wonderful building, I'm so proud to see such a gorgeous building and built there, and found out we have seven more recreation buildings under the 60s. And so anyhow, when I joined this class, the one look at that Hickory, we went on to the police department, looked at the K-9 dogs, went to the communication room, and how they went out and got the bad people, and it was so fun. And then to the fire department, well, we didn't get together, three of us didn't get together the first time around, so they were graciously, so the other time, and I met with the girl, or three of us met with the girl named Carrie, and Carrie gave us this marvelous detail of, what's her name, Tor, change that, Tor, of the fire department, and that was fire department number seven, and I said, gosh, I didn't know there was seven. I knew about the one nearby here, and I knew about all the other, but seven. And it was a wonderful fire department, I mean, the trucks are almost new and polished and maintained, and everything is organized. Well, you know, I searched throughout all the tours, then we went through to the water department, and those people were so intelligent, they knew their business, they were educated, they were polite, they were friendly to us, helpful, and we owe so much gratitude to that lot, we should have put a shutout, we should have done that, they were very helpful. And then, there's so much more, like, maybe seventy-two minutes. So I don't, I was just last night.
You've got some time.
There's so much, and I could go on and on, but last night we went to my library, and I thought, my gosh, you know, I'm a member of this library, and I haven't done, I haven't taken advantage of what they offer, and they've got so many programs and so much you can do, and bookstore reading, DVD, insurance department, people's department, and the old people's department. But the old people sit downstairs, they're all the same, but I just can't stand up. Dana has been great arranging things, she's been a fearless leader, and all the employees that we've dealt with, or dealt with us, I should say, have been just remarkable, and helped us on this group, we should come and be part of this team, this group, thank you.
I think it's so made sense, much better than I ever put it, so thank you all for doing that. If you don't mind, would you mind coming forward so we can help them graduate and give them their recognition? We're going to call them up one by one. As I call your names, you have to go forward. Jeff Barrett. We can call up those first. Bailey Cooper. Teresa Fair is not here tonight because she went for our class, she had class to pass herself. Peggy Fullwood. Juliette Good. Are you on your Hawkins? Alicia Hawkins? Erin Jones?
Now, Alicia, you're here, your husband is the pot-hold guy. Anybody have a problem, he's in the back row right there.
He's not laughing.
Thank you. Robert Luden.
Five Beta Capper, right here.
Hannah Neal. For the head senses.
Hey, Jill, how you doing?
Teresa's not here.
Thank you, guys, 18 students, and Mr. Baron's going to save your comments in the square if you would like to send them.
First of all, I just want to thank you all so much, you know, as city staff, making the presentations, doing the tours and stuff, we're always so flattered, you know, and our residents, the people that we serve every day, when we get up and come to work, that they're willing to take their time, and it's precious time, y'all are busy, to come and to meet with us and to learn about your city. We're here for you all, that's why we do the work that we do. So as graduates now of this program, I want to give you a charge, and that is, don't let this be the end, don't check it off and say, okay, I did that with the city, that's that. There's so many opportunities to stay involved in your community, the city has boards and commissions, the city council members are constantly looking for people who are willing to serve in various roles, we have lots of different projects that are going on in the city where we need and seek citizen input and involvement, and so let this just be the beginning, let it be the beginning, not the end, thank you.
Well, we get some of our best applications for boards and commissions from people who come through the Neighborhood College, and they deserve something, they like to participate in, and I encourage you to. And I encourage you to not be strangers, okay? Uh, I, I, I always like to say that people who don't vote don't have a strong basis to complain about stuff. People who do vote have a strong basis to complain about stuff. But the people who vote and go through neighborhood college, that's a whole different level. Call me on my cell phone, 938-14088. We are, we are, uh, today, I think today's the day. It's the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Gettysburg Address. One of our coworkers sent me an email, said, maybe we ought to just have somebody read the Gettys, maybe you ought to read the Gettysburg Address. It is perhaps the greatest speech ever made. It was made a dedication for a cemetery there where the Battle of Gettysburg, the battle was fought. And if you've ever read anything about the Civil War battles in Gettysburg, the, the rebel soldiers and the Union soldiers would spend the night, sometimes three or four feet apart from each other. Sometimes they shared coffee, they talked. And they knew that probably sometime the next morning, the order would come out, would come down to fight. And of course, there were going to be a lot of deaths in the Civil War. It was the bloodiest, deadliest war ever fought by this country. Abraham Lincoln said, "Four score and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth upon this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal." Now we are engaged in a great civil war, testing whether that nation, or any nation so conceived and so dedicated, can long endure. We are met on a great battlefield of that war. We have come to dedicate a portion of it as a final resting place for those who died here, that the nation might live. This we may and all propriety do. But in the larger sense, we cannot dedicate, we cannot consecrate, we cannot hallow this ground. The brave men, living and dead, who struggled here have hallowed it far above our poor power to add or detract. The world will not note, nor long remember what we say here, while it can never forget what they did here. And a side note, this speech was so powerful that in fact, the world to this day remembers the Gettysburg Address and the power of that message. It is rather for us, the living, we here being dedicated to the great past remaining before us, that from these honored dead, we take increased devotion to that cause for which they here gave the last full measure of devotion. That we here highly resolve these dead shall not have died in vain, that the nation shall have a new birth of freedom and that government of the people, by the people and for the people shall not perish from the earth.
We have requesting, requesting to speak, De'antle Spearman. Topic is voting rights.
Mr. Mayor, would you allow me to invite members of Hickory Branch N double A C P to stand with me? Mayor Wright, members of the city council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Coman. I stand before you tonight as pastor of one of Hickory's mainline African-American churches, third vice president of the North Carolina National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and most of all, as a concerned citizen and defender of minority suffrage with the desire to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. In short, I stand on and firmly believe in the Constitution of these United States. Having followed what I understood to be standard procedure, I personally delivered a resolution to the city clerk on Monday, November fourth, two thousand thirteen, that had been unanimously passed on Saturday, October twelfth, two thousand thirteen, at the seventieth annual convention of the State Conference of Branches of the North Carolina National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, which convened in Rockingham. The document is a resolution on the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, an act that prohibits racial discrimination in voting practices by the United States government and all state and local governments. In some recent research, I learned that federal courts have repeatedly found a history of voting-related discrimination in North Carolina. The Department of Justice has also lodged over sixty objections to changes to voting laws in North Carolina under section five of the Voting Rights Act. In one of the Supreme Court's leading cases, Thornburg versus Gingles, four seventy-eight, U S thirty, nineteen eighty-six, the court let stand a lower court's factual findings that a history of racial discrimination in North Carolina had resulted in a lower socioeconomic status for most African-Americans in the state, that North Carolina had a history of voting-related discrimination, that the political campaigns in North Carolina had used racial appeals, that African-Americans had rarely been elected to office in the state and that voting was racially polarized in certain districts. We all know all too well of the decision of the Supreme Court of the United States early this year that removed a key provision of the Voting Rights Act. And when willing to admit it, we know all too well of the unequal exchanges that have occurred since that time in our state. Exchanges that I prayed would never occur in Hickory. I therefore appeal to you, Hickory City Council, on behalf of the Hickory Branch N double A C P, for support of the resolution and any other action that would prevent the upset of decades of well-established practices that help to make sure that voting is fair and that this council would stand publicly against any act that appears to abridge voting rights and disproportionately affect the voting ability of any minority by encouraging the Congress of the United States of America to fully restore and reactivate the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, my understanding, I believe, is this is subject to litigation, ongoing litigation. And I press will have a quick resolution.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes of Governor Clinton. Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Mr. Sock, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, all members approve. Motion to re-approve and ratify on the second meeting. Motion by Mr. Patton, second by Mr. Sock, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's period, unanimous. Consent agenda, I'd like to have item A taken off the consent agenda, please, to set the petition.
I may refer to the consent agenda with exception of item A.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion will be Mr. Meisner and second by Mr. Wright. Item A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item A is, uh, a request from the city staff to, for the city council to approve the resolution, which will declare surplus. Um, item, uh, piece of equipment at the library, which is a CD and DVD display case. And the proposal is that it be donated to the Hickory Music Factory, which is a local nonprofit organization. Uh, as council knows, Parks and Rec Creation, uh, City Parks Recreation entered into a partnership with the, um, Hickory Music Factory approximately a year ago. And, uh, they are providing lessons and other, uh, music opportunities for youth and teens. And they, uh, the old recreation center's headquarters. And so that's the, uh, the request is to, uh, declare surplus this, uh, display case and basically put it in that building so that it can be used by the Stewards of Hickory Music Factory.
I just, I wanted to clarify my understanding of the partnership we have, which I think is a valuable additional, uh, additional service provided to our citizens. I'm not asking, excuse me, I'm not asking, did they give any breaks to city residents or...
I forewarn Mr. McCloud that he may have to back me up on some of that field's operation.
Sheriff Donald, Mr. Councilman, Mr. Perry, Mr. Crowe. Uh, Mr. Meyer, just to answer your question, did, did, and it is a great partnership between Hickory Music Factory and the city of Hickory. Uh, because of music, of all the program offerings that the city does, that is the one facet we, we were not able to provide, did not have that expertise, knowledge to provide and then do that with it. With Hickory Music, uh, Hickory Music Factory. That's your, that's your question, basically, in lieu of them being housed at, um, the former Parks and Recreation offices at J C Park. The city Hickory is paying utilities for that in exchange for that same value. Hickory Music Factory is offering programs to, to the city Hickory residents. And if you would, they can just get, let me give you a few examples right now. Uh, we just recently completed two programs. We had a petting zoo, uh, musical petting zoo back on October nineteenth, Brown Hen Recreation Center. We also had drum circles, uh, on November ninth at Ridgeview Recreation Center. Uh, what we got coming up, uh, with the programs, we've got music classes that'll start, uh, in January. We'll be offering those, uh, once, uh, every, uh, once a month on Saturdays. Uh, we've got drum circles, uh, scheduled again in February. Uh, we've got a jazz concert, uh, scheduled at Hickory Port River Regional Recreation Park on April the twelfth, uh, which will be open to the, uh, to, to the public. Uh, we've got another petting zoo scheduled for in June. We've got a music showcase that's set up, um, Saturday, July the twelfth. We'll be doing that over Highland Recreation Center. You've heard of dialogue bands, same, same as the musical showcase. Uh, we've got a spoken word recording for, uh, one of our, at Ridge Recreation Center, Black History Month, uh, we do a, a contract, a contest with the Kids' Portrait Contest. And this year, with the partnership we have, now, one of the things we'll be able to do is the winner of that contest will be able to put their, their point to music through professional, uh, recording studios at that, uh, there is a professional recording studio that is at J C Park. And so that'll be part of that. Then we've got Muse Back in the Fall, which is a music presentation class, it's scheduled. So, as you can see, it's, it, it is a great partnership, we, we have a continued great partnership of that.
I make a motion to approve this, uh, nomination. Motion by Wright, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
The next item, uh, again, is an informational item, that's a report of Mayor Wright's travel to North Carolina, North Carolina, the district of Executive Director Search Street, uh, which is on November first, expenses related to mileage and parking.
Could I make a couple comments on that, please? Uh, if I was honored and privileged to be known to be a candidate for the interview for candidates for this job, executive director, uh, the National Leadership Council. That's a position that only kind of has been taken in the last twenty years. And the previous director, again, who was in twenty years. We selected, I think, an outstanding young man named Paul Meyer. Paul is an attorney, a lobbyist, he's been a lobbyist a long time. Uh, he, I think he won, and I can't speak for all eight of us, I think he won the job because of the respect he has in Raleigh for being able to work with all the legislators in our political party. And, uh, I think he's got a wonderful future and I think the league is going to, is going to do well under Paul as they have under Ellis Hanks. But, uh, but I think, uh, I think Ellis would, would agree with saying that, that it may be that it was time for somebody who clearly, in the eyes of all, worked votes out of the eye. And so, uh, I had a lot of input from people across the state. I would please discern on this committee. And I learned a lot about, uh, or got refreshed a lot in, about negotiating, uh, salary packages and all. And, you know, one of the problems in our society today, I believe, is people thinking all the mysteries behind what people in new positions make. And so, I would like to ask that our finance director and our next meeting explain how Mr. Murray's pay was decided and what determines our, uh, it's often published in the newspapers, but that information. And, uh, I think if I were a citizen out there and didn't know that, I think I would find it interesting and ambitious. But I'm going to ask that and let someone believe we shouldn't, uh... Uh, and incidentally, I want you all to understand, I think we have an exceptionally good city manager. And he's worked what he's paid and then some. And so, this is a hot effort to accomplish anything, except, you know, we hear a lot about openness and transparency. And we, we don't have anything to hide with respect to that. So, let's just, let's just lay it out there. What do you think, Mr. Davis? I'm just kidding. Okay, public hearing.
First item of the business is a public hearing. Consider a resoning petition in Alaska. The city's principal founder, Mr. Scott Oliver, presented by the council prior to the...
Mayor Wright, Mr. Councilman, Mr. Craig, Mr. Brown. Resoning petition before United's, resounding petition thirteen dash twelve, this is submitted by Mr. Robert Collins, Jr., for property located on Fourth Street Northeast, request resounding property, R four residential to C two general business. Again, the resounding petition thirteen twelve, the absence of Mr. Robert Collins, the properties are located ten twenty-four, ten thirty, four, three, nine, eight. And they also include two adjacent parcels that are currently vacant. We get the request, this is a resounding property from High Density Residential, R four, to General Business, which has, uh, academic C two. Total area of the property is often bound, is roughly half an acre in size. Currently there are two single condominium structures on, uh, two of the parcels and the other parcel were vacant at this time. Uh, with respect to service availability, all the services that would be required to serve the property are currently in place to serve the property. This shows, uh, the general area we're talking about here. Uh, this area is basically Noronha University, we're getting to the university area here. Uh, we're going back to what Hickory High School, this area. But this would be Tenth Avenue Drive Northeast, landmarks I'll give you some of in just a moment. Uh, the beige area showing a medium density residential, orange you show a high density residential and the blue is showing an opposite official. And again, these are the designations, uh, that were placed on the property with respect to our wrong room, complex plan, level, about on six five four, ten thirty. And again, uh, this will give you some landmarks, uh, with respect to the area. This is the Auto Fitness Center. This is the, uh, recently refurbished Simmons Hosiery Mill, uh, so also Dominic's office over here. Uh, this is, uh, a childcare center. And this is, uh, the Alderman's of Noronha University, the athletic fields. And, uh, with respect to the current zoning of the area, you can see the properties here along the furniture of Tenth Avenue Drive Northeast are currently zoned, uh, C two general business. And these are the subject properties, uh, that the resounding petition was submitted for. These properties, along with this property, are all owned by Mr. Collins. Properties with the, uh, orange color are zoned, uh, R four residential, high density residential, and the blue areas... and the blue areas based off institutional, which is no offices and insulting different types of professional offices in the area there. With respect to recommendations in strategy for Hickory by choice twenty thirty, it's kind of unclear about some of the stuff with respect to the C, the existing C2. The existing C2 is for some existing developments that was there prior to the implementation of Hickory by choice plans, so the zoning definitely matched those uses, making it work on creating any non- hickory businesses, definitely to the detriment of the businesses. So that's kind of the mindset that was put into that part of the process there. One part of the Hickory by choice plan does go into state that basically all these type uses are compatible with the high density residential, institutional expectation, if they're located along a thoroughfare, major thoroughfares, which 10th Avenue Drive is a minor thoroughfare by our long range conference plan. And so we're kind of using those things as a jump off from effectively the recommendation that we're moving forward here. The recommendation that both council, excuse me, the commission and staff came up with was to basically, this is pretty much the furthermost limit that you will see commercial development in this area. This is the line, the line of the sanctum as far as where commercial development will move forward in this area here. And we presented to the plan which was on October 23rd, conducted a hearing, council called the applicant's vote at the hearing, there was no one to the oppositions at the hearing. It's in closure, commission, regulatory approval of the petitions likewise, staff does also. And I will be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
What do you have is we're not going to have general business biding up against my net for the residential?
Yes, it, it currently does here. Yes, ma'am.
What type of buffer we have to have?
Depending upon the use, if you intend to do, you said, what?
With reference to that consistency statement, it's not along 10th Avenue Drive, it's clearly off Fourth Street.
Yes.
Fourth Street Northeast is not a minor thoroughfare.
No, no, no.
It's a neighborhood street.
Exactly.
Okay. So and that's where the driver would, that's how that lot gains legal access.
Yes.
That's this legal right of entry.
Well, I, I understood your answer, but we don't normally have general business biding up against residential. Normally there's an office institutional type center. Is this an isolated campus?
Yes, these properties that are zoned general business have been displayed for a long time. Actually, this property, we're Simmons Hosiery Mill, that was on industrial until about three years ago.
Is there a new daycare center or child development center that we're looking to do for this area?
From discussions, Mr. Stevens, that I've had, we're talking with the applicant and the council for the applicant, so is their intention is they could expand the childcare center?
There's one area that will expand, they asked.
Yes, sir. And with the question of the office institutional, then you would essentially put a small spot on an area where it's office institutional, you have, your flow is kind of weird if you follow me on that with half office, commercial office, and this, it doesn't benefit just to have the rezonance and the commercial just to stand next to this property.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. When I opened the public hearing, I asked first that people who would like to speak against this proposal offer comment, after fifteen minutes, we shared among the people who want to comment, and then those who are for this proposal would get a chance, we would have fifteen minutes and then on those same lines. Then there's a chance five minute for rebuttal and server rebuttal. We always say that we want people who speak, we want to make sure everybody gets a chance to say their piece, but we try to get some out of courtesy to all to stay within those time limits. With that, I would throw the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is the regular one who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one deserving to speak, I think. Oh, Mrs. Taylor, I'm sorry. I thought you were leaving the meeting.
Mayor Wright, members of the council, I have a theory, Taylor, and after this evening, state with you in favor of the applicant. We do believe that this is a compatible use. If you're facing the property from Fourth Street there, you'll see to the right is the auto repair business and then to the left is the office use that now has been redeveloped into a nice facility there. The Combs and their family have, this has been a daycare since 1955. Their family has owned it since 1985 and their intention is to replace the existing structure. They're going to combine all of those properties into one tax parcel, so it'll just be one building on one tax parcel. And they have entered into a private buffer agreement with the gentleman to the rear, so there will be a buffer there to the rear. And we really feel like this will be a good addition, create jobs, create good economic base and just make sense in this one location. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak for the proposal? With that, I'd turn the public hearing close and next is motion of discussion. Good for example. Any closing discussion? Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Mrs. Patton, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Get you down.
Next item of new business is a departmental report in Alaska, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, coming to the podium and present a staff recommendation and improvements to LP France Stadium.
Mayor Wright, Mr. Counsel, Mr. Brown. Tonight, before you, a memorandum or recommended memorandum of understanding between the city of Hickory and Hickory Baseball that contains basically a year's worth of negotiations boiled down into this MOE that basically says the city of Hickory would undertake a number of additional projects beyond what it's currently doing at LP France Stadium. In exchange for that, Hickory Baseball would also undertake significant projects at the stadium as well. So I'll, I'll get, get to that, but first just a little bit of background on the stadium itself. Taking you back twenty years, the stadium was originally built and cost a $2.3 million and completed in 1993, that was the first season of Crawdads. The city of Hickory's investment was only $900,000 without a map. The remainder of the funds came from over seventy private donations and that speaks to the degree to which this was a community effort to bring minor league baseball to Hickory. For folks that are around, you'll remember that. Hickory Baseball specifically, they contributed around a million dollars towards the construction of the stadium. About, the reason that's an estimated amount, with $200,000 of that amount came through the city's books, another 800,000 or so they invested in building the office space and the cafe at the stadium today, which is city of Hickory property, everything out there owned by the city. They had a significant investment in the stadium as well. So the taxpayers of Hickory got a real bang for their buck on 900,000 or $2.3 million on that stadium. And of course, per the concession or the lease agreement that we have with Hickory Baseball, we are obviously the landlord of LP France Stadium and we're responsible for maintenance and upkeep of the stadium. And also in the lease agreement, Hickory Baseball is responsible for maintaining the play. Just a little additional background quickly. It's important that, that the city keep LP France Stadium a desirable place for a baseball team to be located. Obviously, the current owners of Hickory Baseball are not going to be around forever. Ownership one day will change. There's a rumor in the league that one is not us, but there's another team in the league that's going to lose a team because it's not performing in terms of their numbers where they'd like it to be. You know, if you look across North Carolina, Kinston at one time had a team, they don't have one now. Gastonia had a team at one point, I think ours may not come from Gastonia twenty years ago, so they lost a team and haven't they were to get one. So it's, it's important to keep in mind, we need to, keeping a professional minor league baseball team in Hickory is not going to be a given, it's something we'll have to work at over time. And to that point, the current lease agreement with Hickory Baseball expires in December of 2022, so there's some time. However, there is one out clause in the agreement in January of 2018, which is four years from now. So that's just something to keep in mind. Just some numbers, attendance numbers for the Crawdads this past season, they had over 141,000 paid attendance, that was their number. That's, that's, that's in the lower half. If you look at the South Atlantic League, it's in the lower half, it's not the bottom, it's not in the middle, it's bottom third, let's say. It's about, over the seventy home games that they have, the average paid attendance is about 2,000 people per game. So just to give you some background there. And also something, just a positive note, this year we're going to have, LP France will host the South Atlantic League All-Star Game, it's going to be two days of publicity, we can showcase our stadium, showcase Hickory Devil B Plus coming up this coming summer. That's a little background. We have some ongoing projects that really are a topic of conversation tonight, but I want to just reiterate what we've already got going on at the stadium that city council has previously approved. Actually, two years ago, we started applying city money aside for renovations to LP France Stadium. And over a two-year period, this being the second year, that's going to total about $1.1 million. And the projects that we have going on within that amount of money is replacing the stadium seating, which is twenty years old, upgrading the field lights to meet the professional baseball standards. Currently, those lights, the stadium don't meet professional baseball standards. In our lease agreement, we are obligated to maintain that stadium to professional baseball standards, so that's why that's been done. We've got some skybox renovations, repair the concourse, the concrete in the concourse and entrance, improvements to the dugouts and just miscellaneous electrical upgrades and some hardware replacement and landscape replacement. So again, these projects are underway today, they'll be, they'll be completed, Wright, Chuck and Mac, they'll be completed by opening day this coming season, so we're working hard on those. So that's just what we've got going on now. So here are the additional projects that we've been talking to Hickory Baseball about for over a year. This is where we started and I'm going to whittle it down to where we are today, which contains this memorandum of understanding. The city was approached in August of 2012 by Hickory Baseball to consider a much larger improvement project above the $1.1 million. They, they asked us to consider a $9 million renovation project to LP France Stadium. We said, no, we're not in a financial position to provide all $9 million for the stadium. However, if you are willing to put some money towards some projects at the stadium, we may entertain the idea that we could come to city council and ask for additional funds to do some things that make sense for us to do. So that's, that's where we, that's where we are today. So in this memorandum of understanding, here's how, here's how it boils down on the city's side as far as what we would be responsible for in terms of projects. We would install, and I'm going to have an aerial shot that's going to kind of give you some, give you some locations of these, but we would install what's called club level seating along the first base side of the stadium, an estimated cost of $71,000. If you recall, when we went to Durham, they had a club level seating, it's a higher, it's a higher level seating where you get food and drink service, it's taller, taller tables that you sit at, not, not stadium seats with taller seats. You get a higher level of service, it's a higher ticket price and that sort of thing. If we were building the stadium today, that is something that we would more than likely recommend including. In addition to that, we're, we would be responsible for installing what's called a terrace group picnic zone, that's a multi-level picnic zone. Durham also had, theirs wasn't multi-level, theirs was one level, but ours would be a multi-level picnic zone along the first base side, and that's an estimated cost of $250,000. And then finally, just some cosmetic improvements to the concourse and graphics and a way, new wayfinding system. Going to stadium often, it's hard to figure out where things are sometimes, so just an overall improved look of the concourse area as well as additional sign, estimated cost of $70,000. So those are the three projects the city, the city would undertake. And Hickory Baseball, in exchange for the city adding these projects to our list of stadium improvement projects, they would be responsible for renovating the bar and cafe area as well as the bar and cafe patio area, and the cost estimate on that is a half a million dollars. So the total estimated cost of our projects is $391,000, their, the estimated cost of their project is a half a million dollars. In the lease agreement, any renovations that Hickory Baseball makes, we have to approve their plans, so we would, we would be able to look at the plans to make sure it's going to meet the thresholds we've talked about here. And additionally, just like when Hickory Baseball originally constructed or paid for the, the office and cafe area, all improvements made at the stadium have come back to be the property of the city. Just to give you an idea, just to start with Hickory Baseball, this is the cafe area and the cafe patio area, so these, this is the improvement area they would be addressing, again, that would be their project. And then here is the, the group terrace picnic zone, it would be, again, a terrace, kind of a multi-level, just imagine picnic tables for groups of folks, thirty layers of that. And here's the club level seating area, again, all along the first base side of the, of the stadium. So that's just to give you a corner reference there in terms of where all this is headed in the stadium. And if city council were to approve the memorandum of understanding, with that would require budget limits, amount of $391,000, it would comfortably be in balance. Of course, if you don't approve it, there's no interest in those orders. But again, this was a year's worth of work, special thanks to Mac and Chuck and all their time and their fast time in putting this together. I'll leave that answer in the question.
Yeah, it's amazing when you did that one little hand gesture. I remember Brian Hyatt standing there probably twenty, two years ago, Mac and Chuck, and doing this, we're talking about construction to Hickory Baseball with the snow and the rain and all that. It seems to be the symbol for any type of destruction that's out there.
And miraculous. But if they had fifteen inches of snow, what, two weeks before the?
Any questions?
Well, they feel like that's going to be lovely, it's a killer, it's like, maybe I do.
We don't know. We, we went from a, from the perspective of if we were building a stadium today, what these amenities we would have? And the answer is yes, and we think if, again, when we reach a point where we may be dealing with a change in ownership of the team, that's, that's something that would be a nice amenity to have. Again, the improvements to the, to the cafe area. The cafe area is extremely small, they're looking at enlarging that, and that, that would be something that would need to be done by new ownership.
Well, if there is a change in ownership, it certainly makes it more attractive and easier to settle.
And we need to start thinking very strategically about these sorts of things at the stadium because it is, we do believe that we are going to have to make, make investments in the stadium to make it a desirable venue for minor league baseball. It's not, we can't sit back and expect professional baseball to be here automatically.
So historically, is that why they moved from other places? Is it in this town, we've seen an upgrade of stadium?
Well, it, for the, it's all going to boil down to money and numbers for the teams, that's what they're going to look at. So if we're attracting better numbers, it's going to be easier to get somebody to stay here.
I think it's important to realize that not only is it used for baseball, but it can be used for other venues as well. And I think that it's twenty years old, every time you think it's twenty years old, it's obligated to be some improvement.
And in fact, somebody pointed out in the history lab, I think, that they're turning down, turning the field at seventeen years old, and it costs several hundred million. Any comments?
Well, I, I was involved in some of the direct conversations with Hickory Baseball, with staff and all that, and Warren in particular. From my perspective, did a marvelous job negotiating and presenting the city's position and our side. I know no one on, on council would assume this, but I think it's worth saying that, I mean, these are very arms-length negotiations and, and we went in there with not a lot of interest in doing much of anything, but I mean, aside from what was required under the law. in doing much of anything, but, I mean, aside from what was required under the lease, but as we began to continue the discussions on it, we were, you know, we, council people are expected to know a lot, some council people think they know everything, perhaps, but one of the things that I got educated on was sort of the, what it means to provide baseball as an entertainment to a community, and what you got to have to play in, to participate in that space, or in that, you know, to have that for your community. Councilman Meisner mentioned to me beforehand, I didn't know this, there's only seven cities in Oklahoma that have professional baseball, and we're one of them. And in some ways, we could perhaps say that the Crawdads are the, is the grandfather maybe of the Charlotte Knogs down there in Charlotte, that Don Beal was still in a beautiful stadium down there. But I think it's not, it's not one of those things that you can put a pencil to and calculate out direct financial returns, but it is most certainly an amenity that is, that creates, that makes our city unique, and I think helps support the demographic that we see migrating out of the area. I think it provides opportunity and recreation for that twenty to forty-four-year-old, and for, really, for all generations. And so I just wanted to particularly state that the negotiations were indeed negotiations with a lot of back and forth, and our staff did a great job getting us to this position.
Well, I like, when I travel in the South Texas, I like opening the paper and seeing Hickory, North Carolina, visiting the standings. I like seeing the Norrion University visit at the top of the standings. But I think also visitors, I think when they're here and they go by the visitor's center, they, this is one of the things we highlight as something to leave in Hickory. I think it makes a good impression when they see that beautiful stadium, although it has some magic on it. I think when they see that, they get an impression that we are not just a sleepy little place. So I'm, I've got a lot of soul searching on this one, I can make a whole new decision, and I believe we've got to do what we can that's reasonable to keep minor league baseball in it. I'll make a motion that we approve this.
I'll say it.
Motion by Ryan, second by Seabrook. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That she answers. Any appointments? You know, a lot of our, a lot of our neighborhoods for neighborhood college.
I think we could, I have a goodie under that. I move approval of the budget, budget amendment.
Motion by Mr. Layel, second by Mr. Seabrook. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Any appointments? New neighborhood college graduate, pick something out there over the next week to show application of it. And admittedly, sometimes, and you'll have to decide, a lot of times people sign up for a committee that is a one, and then my first choice, that I can serve amongst that who like it. And some of the commissions do this, and others are specific. For example, one specific thing is, for some of them, you have to live in a certain ward to be appointed for that little slot. For others, there are requirements for minority of a certain type, minority that's differently able, that sort of thing. So, but look at it, and let's get some applications in and see if we can fill up some of these Anybody else have a comment about appointments?
I've got two that are coming in next door, this one's six minutes.
Got an at-large public art commission if you like art.
I've got a war.
At-large, anybody who lived in Hickory, crawdard or whatever.
Who lives in war, war three would like to serve on that.
Okay, we're not asking. We're not directing anybody, but we would like to, seriously. Think about it, see if there's something you'd like to do, serve. Generally, it requires a meeting about a month, some don't meet in the summer, they come this, vacations. About a meeting a month, and then from there, you can get as active as you want to, you can become a working chairperson of this commission. Okay, any, Matt is not on to your agenda. Any general comments?
Mr. Merritt, I can recognize another scout that's here with us this evening. Hannah Von Drill Bishop could stand up. I don't want his mom to get mad at me and I'm not present, I'm going to say, what?
He didn't get recognized.
He's out of uniform, I think he probably came from a soccer game or something. He's part of that bomb drill plan, you should keep your eye on him around here.
All right, good night.
A little question on the neighborhood college, how many classes are yours that we have there?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. You start putting that over there, yours.
It's time for a reunion. Under general comment, anybody want to make any general comments?
Three lighting Friday night.
And I'm going to put Mrs. Fox in this spot, because I talked about this today with Mr. Nick, you know what's, Mrs. Fox, with you, your grandson says you're lined up. I mean, fingers will be spinkin'. This, next week, if you, if you don't know, next meeting if Mrs. Fox lays, I'm just going to see if you and that grandson, Rick, would be the stars to come out, come on this line. Okay. We've got to volunteer for that. And incidentally, there will be openings for other children to have some magic involvement in that, so it's not limited to the kids, okay? We do a little make-work on that, and everybody thinks they're turning around. If you've got a kid that really wants to do it last night. I just want to thank everybody who, like, who voted in the last election, I'm speaking strictly for myself at this point. I want to thank everyone who voted, and I particularly want to thank those who voted for me. But I do appreciate everyone who voted. We had a decent turnout for this kind of an election, and I know it was pitiful, fifteen percent I guess, but that's a decent turnout when you compare us to other cities around the state and around the country. So we did have more interest than many cities did, and that's the best way in my opinion to call it, to say. Any other comments? Motion for the chairman?
I'm with you, Jerry.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Seabrook, second by Mr. Layel. Thank you for being here. All in favor, please say aye.